Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting, August 25th, 2015. We're one council member short for a few minutes, but we will start the meeting. I'd like to thank the garden club, no?
Not today.
I guess we don't have a floral arrangement, so thank them anyway. They always provide something for our meetings, almost always. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
And I see our superintendent, Cheryl Olson, in the audience. Would you lead us in the pledge, please?
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have one announcement this evening. The city will hold a five-year remembrance event on September 9th, 2015. Information is available on the city website, www.sanbruno.ca.gov. And that will be up in the Crestmore neighborhood, commencing about 6 o'clock that evening. Presentations, we're going to receive a presentation from the 2015 San Bruno Sister City Student Exchange Delegation to Narita, Japan. So you're on. David?
Good evening, Mayor Ruane, and members of the San Bruno City Council. My name is David Waltering. I'm San Bruno's Community Development Director. Earlier this summer, I had the pleasure and distinct honor to lead San Bruno's 2015 Sister City Delegation to Narita, Japan. Our delegation was made up of two teachers from Parkside Middle School, Jonna Cabrera and Kristin Vogel, and Parkside's librarian Judy Spooner, along with 10 of Parkside's recently graduated students. We were very fortunate to enjoy with our Japanese hosts the 25th anniversary celebration of this extremely successful cultural exchange program. The city of San Bruno, the San Bruno Unified School District, the city of Narita, the Narita International Friendship Society, our students' parents and families, the Narita host families, the many volunteers, the important supporters like former Parkside School Vice Principal Gordon Wee, all contributed to make our experience a tremendous success. It was an incredibly enriching week of exchange, friendship, and goodwill. We were able to tour Narita's city's facilities, meet with Narita Mayor Kuzunari Kosumi, and experience traditional prayer and tea ceremonies. It was an incredibly interesting experience. I took great pride in our students. They listened, they participated, they contributed greatly. They prepared speeches in Japanese, they delivered those speeches, they delivered those speeches to the Narita City Council. The mayor, the Narita mayor, was extremely impressed with our students. Students also played instruments, they did a dance performance several times. They were really, truly outstanding. I was quite proud of our students. Tonight, our students are prepared to share their thanks with you, our city council members, and also share some of their experiences with all of you. And Mr. Mayor, from the mayor of Narita, we have a gift for you at the dais. And I want to thank you again, and all council members, for a tremendous experience. We all enjoyed it. So, students, if you could come forward, please, I would appreciate it. Yuma?
(laughing). My name's Yuma Miyaki, and obviously, I'm one of the delegate members. And I'm sure you already heard all these thank you speeches already before, but please bear with us, it'll only take a couple of minutes. Anyways, the biggest feeling I probably felt over this trip was probably astonishment because of the dedication from the families from both here and Japan. And it was all their effort for feeding and entertaining us the whole time, it was just overwhelming. And I myself have actually went to Japan a couple, well, actually, many, many times, but I think this is the first time to actually feel a considerate atmosphere for the first time. And I was also startled by the students there in Japan, from their communication with us in both English and Japanese. And I was really surprised by their English, and they were also surprised by my Japanese. And they cut their homework and sleep time to enjoy every moment with us, so we all appreciate it. And I was able to feel all the significance of this program. And I want to thank you all for giving me a chance to be part of this eminent exchange program. Thank you.
This opportunity has affected me, Sriya Janthi, in so many ways. I cannot think of a specific favorite part because everything was fantastic. One thing I noticed was the kindness in all the people I met in Japan. It just seemed to radiate off of them. When I first got there, I barely felt away from home, and their hospitality and compassion definitely played a part in that. Kyoto was one of the extremely generous people we spent time with on the trip. He decided to buy us all umbrellas with money straight out of his pocket if we didn't have one. Did I mention how often it rained when we were there? It was great. Seeing all the beautiful greenery on that first day I got there was definitely something I was not used to. They also made sure to keep us hydrated and full of amazing food, offering water to us every time the bus made a new stop. I had Japanese curry rice for the first time there, and it's now still at the top of my favorites list. Ibuki's mom made it for Shiloh and me on our last day there because I liked it so much. I sincerely thank the city of San Bruno for letting me have this unforgettable experience. Japan was amazing.
Hello, my name is Shiloh Drenning, and I had the honor of being one of the students that were a part of the Narita Exchange Program. This experience can only be described as breathtaking and eye-opening. Not only is Narita, Japan, a beautiful city, but it is filled with such amazing and kind people that made the trip even better. While there, our everyday schedule kept us busy going places and doing fun activities such as going to Tokyo and spending the night at a temple. Going to the temples and tea ceremony gave us the opportunity to learn firsthand about the Japanese culture and lifestyle. It was so nice for the families to let us stay in their homes, and we were able to bond strong friendships with all of them. They treated us like family, and I can't thank them enough for that. I can't wait to return someday, and I would like to thank city council for putting so much effort, money, and resources into this. You made this trip possible, and none of us will ever forget it. And now I will speak on behalf of Kathy Lynn, who was not able to come today. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kathy Lynn, and I would like to thank you all who helped make this trip possible. The efforts you put in, your time, your patience, in allowing us to experience a different culture firsthand is truly appreciated. This experience has been unforgettable. One of the best moments throughout our trip was after we landed and grabbed our luggages. As we made our way over there, they were all waving, cheering, and waiting to welcome us. We exchanged hugs and greetings that felt long overdue. The families have been so generous and caring that they made us feel like part of their family. During our stay there, we attended a tea ceremony, rode on a river cruise, and blew our money on claw machines, visited a couple of beautiful temples, and even got the opportunity to sleepover at one. During the sleepover, we performed, played games, and got to know each other better. The last day of the trip was dreadful. As we said our goodbyes, knowing that it'll most likely be the last time all of us were in the same room, was sad and filled with tears. Thankfully, there is social media where we still talk, update each other on what we're doing, and share all the memories we have made together. This program has inspired me, and hopefully, one day, I can be a part of this program again and give back by helping other future outgoing students to make their own unforgettable experience while taking part of the wonderful Narita Exchange Program.
My name is Amber Larson, and I would just like to take a moment to tell you a couple highlights of my trip. First of all, staying with the host families was an amazing experience because I got to experience what it was like to live with the Japanese family. I found them to be hardworking, humble, and caring towards us. I enjoyed visiting the schools and participating with them in their classrooms, eating lunch with them, playing tennis, and listening to the students sing a beautiful song to us. I will never forget this trip or the people that I met in Japan. I am so grateful that the city of San Bruno participates in this program. Both my sister and I were lucky enough to go to Narita, and it was a memory that we will never have, no, that we will never forget. Thank you.
My name is Lucas Jensen, and I'd like to thank city council for the truly unforgettable experience and for helping all of us go to Narita, Japan. While I was there, I got to experience what it was really like to be a person who lives in Japan. I can and probably will visit Japan again sometime, but it won't be the same. I won't be living in a Japanese home with Japanese people who are showing me how they live everyday life, and I won't get the same unique experience. This is probably the high point of my life, and thank you.
My name is Lenny Nikes, and I was very fortunate enough to participate in the Narita Exchange Program. Thank you. Being part of the Narita Exchange Program has truly been an honor. It was definitely one of the highlights of my time at Parkside and probably one of the highlights of my life. The experiences we had in Japan were truly unforgettable, and I will value the knowledge I've gained and the friendships I have made for the rest of my life. I am so thankful for the opportunity and everyone that made it possible, including the city of Narita, the city of San Bruno, Parkside, and all the parents and teachers who supported us throughout our journey. I think I can speak for all of us when I say that when we were in Japan, we felt like we were at home. Our host families and all the Japanese delegates were so kind and welcoming. It was amazing. I've never felt, or have, it was great to feel that kindness. We got to visit temples, attend a traditional Japanese tea ceremony, visit the middle schools and elementary schools, and even go to karaoke with our hosts, which was really fun. And the food was amazing, too. It was good. And I'm just so thankful for the opportunity to the city of San Bruno and Parkside, and yeah, thank you.
Hello, my name is Visa Rai. This summer, I had the honor of representing our city, San Bruno, through the Sister City Exchange Program to Narita, Japan. It was an amazing experience being able to travel to a foreign country and to experience new culture while making friends along the way. Thanks to San Bruno and Narita. It was fun touring our Japanese counterparts around San Bruno and the Bay, which includes our school, one of UTEU's headquarters, the Academy of Sciences in Great America. We did many wonderful activities while in Japan, from visiting Nats College and watching them build cars, to going to Sony's Explorer Museum and watching technology. But none of this would have been possible without you guys, San Bruno community, and the San Bruno community's helping organization in all of this. I'd like to say a special thank you to all the parents and teachers involved, and to Ms. Miyaki for her time and dedication. Thank you.
My name is Andrew Monizon, and I was lucky enough to participate in the Narita Exchange Program along with nine other students from my former eighth-grade classes here. The journey I went on was astonishing. There's no really, I don't think there's another word I could really explain it with. I met new people, tried new things, and made some lifelong friends along the way. I oftentimes find myself missing Narita and wishing I was still there. Although my time there was short-lived, I consider Narita my home away from home. And I'd have, if, I share my favorite memory from the trip was I actually got to play guitar for the students at one of the middle schools. And it was really interesting being able to share music that doesn't even translate, or, sorry. It just meant a lot to me. I would like to thank the city council for their support, the chaperones, and last but not least, the Bob Marshall Scholarship Fund for sending me on my trip. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Julian David. I first learned about the Narita Program when my sister went two years ago. I had always wanted to travel the world, and this seemed like the perfect opportunity. When this time come in the eighth grade, I applied to be a part of the program, and to my luck, was accepted. Soon after, I made a number of new friends from both Parkside and Narita and learned lots about a completely new culture. I'd like to thank the city of San Bruno and the city of Narita for such a wonderful experience, and I hope it continues to come for years to come.
So, Mayor Ruane and council members, that concludes our presentation. And as you heard from the students, we had an amazing time. It was incredibly enriching. The hosts were incredible in terms of how they shared, how compassionate and giving they were. They spent so much time in wanting us to understand their culture, their rituals, their traditions. We really, really appreciated the opportunity. Thank you so much.
Thank you, David, and students. You know, this is a great program, and we really hope it continues more aggressively in the future. My son-in-law went a number of years ago, and he's in his early 30s and still stays in contact with the people he stayed with, and they exchange, and they've been back and forth. So it's something you're going to remember for the rest of your lives. But before I finish, I want to see what the mayor sent to me. This is not a large bottle of Japanese aftershave. So I would ask the council to please help me make this a very short meeting. Thank you, Mayor Koizumi.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Ken?
I couldn't be prouder of each year. Thank you for being great representatives of our community in Japan. Each year, we hear these same stories. And it's been about 15 years since I've been there, and I'm a world traveler. I've been all over the world, and I will never forget the five days I spent in Narita. And you attest that they are the same giving, hospitable people that I experienced and continue to experience through the students at Parkside. I need to get back there, and, because it's, each year, it's just so, it's great hearing your stories. And congratulations on going, and thank you, parents and Parkside School, for, you know, sustaining this, because it's not us. I mean, we, Bob Marshall started it with a group, Harry Costa and the Rotary, and, you know, it's just been the kids. It's been the kids, the families, and the teachers that have maintained this. So proliferate through the rest of the, through the rest of the school and get them all to get there in their eighth grade. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we have a very exciting meeting, but if you'd like to excuse yourselves and work on your homework, please go ahead and do it now. Item number five is review of the agenda. If there's no objections, I'd like to move item number 11, which is the annual report of the Culture and Arts Commission, to right after number eight public hearings. Approval of amendments, number six, special council meeting July 23rd and 30th, and regular council meeting July 28th, 2015. Any errors, corrections, omissions? Seeing none to be approved as submitted. Item number seven is our consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier than council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. Any action on the consent calendar?
Through the chair, I'd like to pull item G as in "go."
Okay, anything else? Michael?
I want to make a few comments on item H.
Okay. Any action on the remainder of the consent?
Second.
Motion is second. No question. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item G is accept a resignation from Parks and Recreation Commission member, declare a commission member vacancy, and direct the city clerk to initiate the process for appointment of a new member. Ken?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and community, this, we always like to thank any volunteer on our commission that leaves for whatever reason, and this resignation is particularly notable because Greg Pierce has been a very involved member of this community. Greg, I talked to him just yesterday. He and his wife Heidi are spending enjoyable time and extended vacation, but he's going to get more involved in being more with his family and his wife away from San Bruno. But he's not leaving, and I told him that we'd be talking about him tonight, but not in an obituary-type of way. I've only known him for about 10 years, and the fact is that this guy, along with his wife, had been very involved not only at Cappuccino, but with AYSO, thousands of children and families. And then my involvement with him has been with the Park and Rec Commission, with the San Bruno Lions Club, and then also with the San Bruno Rotary Club. So Greg is, his backing off on being involved, at least officially, with these organizations is a big loss throughout the community. But the good news is that Greg is not leaving. Greg will pop up every once in a while, and according to his resignation letter, he will be showing up at certain community events. So my best wishes to Greg and Heidi, and I just thank him for all of his service in San Bruno.
Thank you. Well said. He was going to be sorely missed on the commission. Any action on item G?
Move to approve, second.
Motion to approve item G. All in favor?
Aye.
Item H, adopt a resolution authorizing the closure of Whitman Way between the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. during certain weeks in September 2015 for the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission Peninsula Pipeline Seismic Upgrade Project. Michael?
Thank you. I just, I wanted to request if we could perhaps, I know that the contractor is doing some notification in the neighborhood, and they're going to have signs up. I was wondering if we could maybe do the same thing on our website, just to make sure that that information is out there in a different source. I was also thinking that maybe the SMC alert, I know they do some non-emergency road closure alerts on occasion, so if we could get it out that way as well, just so that we can give people a bit of a heads-up, because it is going to be pretty disruptive, and it's right in the middle of the day during the weekday. So I was wondering if we could maybe do that.
We can certainly do that. I would just note that this is a continuation of an existing road closure, which has been going on for some weeks now already, and has actually given the location and the amount of traffic that usually travels through there has been not much of a, not generating a lot of complaints. So far, we've been very lucky, and I think that our outreach, which I believe has previously included the website, but we'll make sure, it has been effective, we'll make sure that those strategies are employed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I was at Shelter Creek this past weekend, and I saw just the enormity of that project, and it really got me thinking about that. Thank you, Ken.
Through the chair, if I could add.
Ken?
If it is a continuation of the previous agreement, I'd like to notify those residents and the public that there is a sidewalk that is always maintained open. That has been cleared by the PUC, and I've noticed, witnessed it, and spoken to a couple of residents who have confirmed that a sidewalk is available for pedestrian traffic.
All right. Thank you. Any action on item H?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve item H. Under the consent calendar, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Public hearings, item eight. There are no public hearings this evening. We're going to move right to item 11, which is the, we're going to receive the annual report from the Culture and Arts Commission.
Hi, good evening, mayor and council. My name's Melody Tobin. I'm one of the Culture and Arts Commissioners. Along in the audience with us is Pamela, not Gamble, Madden, I apologize. We have two Pamlas. Pamela Madden's with us again this evening. I'm here to give you the report, the Culture and Arts Commission. The commission is responsible for promoting the artistic development of the community and preserving San Bruno's diverse cultural heritage. The commission's goals include acquiring and maintaining public art, as well as sponsoring programs and events that enhance the quality of life for residents and improve the image and character of our community. In 2014, we completed the Centennial Mosaic mural, which is ready for installation at the Posey Park wall of the train station. We completed and installed the Swimming Pool House Centennial Tiles Project that was part of a community project where tiles were made by community members in the year of our centennial. And if you haven't gone by and taken a look at them yet, they're displayed on the outside of the pool house. We hosted the International Children's Art Exhibition from San Bruno Sister City Narita in the library. We hosted the Year of Gallery Exhibits in the City Library as well. That's an ongoing event that the Culture and Arts Commission has sponsored. We continue to host Movies in the Park in the month of September. We continue to host Shakespeare in the Park in the month of October. And we're continuing a dialogue with Skyline College on a community joint art project with the Skyline students. And we've commenced planning for a signal box painting project in the community. We've selected 10 boxes that we plan to offer up for artists to present samples of painting the signal boxes next year, so that's a project that's on our agenda for next year. So here's a display of our Centennial Mosaic mural that we're so, so very proud of and look forward to having installed at Posey Park. This is the history of San Bruno, as you can see. One of the pictures from the children's art exhibition from Narita. This is some of the art that was in our community art gallery exhibition in the library. And then the 2014 Movies in the Park, Frozen, Despicable Me, I have no idea, Iron Man, and Goonies. This year, we are hosting Big Hero Six, Jurassic Park, the original, Guardians of the Galaxy, and Annie. Shakespeare in the Park is the last Sunday in October, I believe. We've traditionally had really good weather, and it's been a nice turnout. So our goals for 2015-2016, top of our list as always, is to install the Centennial Mosaic mural at Posey Park, to continue the gallery exhibit program at the library, to continue hosting the 2015 Narita International Children's Exhibit artwork, to continue with our Movies in the Park and the Shakespeare in the Park. We recommend a project to create art on signal boxes, which we plan to present to you shortly. We're looking forward to possibly hosting a poetry series in the library, and we want to continue to develop the commission's vision for future art projects, and to continue to partner with Skyline College on a collaborative to partner with Skyline College on a collaborative art project between Skyline students and San Bruno Culture and Arts Commission. There any questions?
Any questions for? I'd just like to say, as I always do, our commission's boards and committees are the lifeblood of this city. They're all volunteer, put in a lot of hours, a lot of time, very well spent, and this is one of the commissions where you actually get to see the results touchy-feely, so it's exciting. Mark, can you give us a rough idea when we might get the encroachment permit so we can actually put the mural in place?
Well, I think it goes without saying that this has been an incredibly frustrating experience, not only for the city, the city council, Culture and Arts Commission, but my office as well. Back in July, I forwarded a copy of what we hope is the final encroachment agreement to the attorney. Apparently, he was out for most of the month of August. I did contact him today, and he said he'd get to it by the end of the week, so I'm hoping that we can finalize that very shortly.
Okay, very good. We're looking, really looking forward to that.
We experienced, as you know, our first big project was the markers on El Camino. So we've been down this path before. We understand the frustration. We know that it's a process, and we're just so proud that the art is complete, it's being stored by the artist, and it's ready to go whenever Caltrans is ready to let us install it. We also know that we couldn't complete the projects that we do without the support of our staff, which is Carrie Burns, and city manager, and the council, our representative this year is council member Irene O'Connell. So we know that the commission wouldn't exist without Carrie and her staff, long hours and hard work, because she comes to our meetings after her regular day, and then she communicates with seven very pushy commissioners that want answers constantly. And unfortunately, when we're frustrated, we take it out on her. So we would like to thank Carrie for putting up with us. If there's no other questions, that completes our presentation.
Thank you for a wonderful report. Item number nine, public comment, item's not on this agenda. It is the council's policy refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agenda is pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council under public comment? Just tell us your name and your street.
Marty Medina, Garden Avenue. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Marty Medina, and I'm running for City Council 2015. I am committed to running a positive and factual campaign. There are many issues that are facing our city. I want to improve San Bruno for everyone. I invite everybody to show up at the October 2nd, I'm sorry, October 5th debate, sponsored by the League of Women Voters. And you can obtain more information about my campaign at medinaforSanBruno2015.com. You can also reach me at email at SanBrunoTruth@gmail.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I have two pieces of literature in my head.
Could you tell us your name and your, tell us your name and your street?
My name is Elmer Madrid. I live in South San Francisco. I'm a past resident of San Bruno. My brother and my sister both raised, there are 10 kids here in San Bruno, and I still have family living here, as well as my, my mother is over in Golden Gate National Cemetery. She's been there since 1958, so this is kind of like the center of my world. I spend a lot of time here during the daytime at the senior center, so I am, I have a lot of friends here. And recently, I was over at the VA Med Center, and a past city councilman of San Bruno told us that there was a lot of money for veterans affairs that was being discussed here in San Bruno. And that's what I'm here to address. Everybody has an idea of how to help veterans. The VA, the government is doing a lot better. There were a lot of programs, a lot of people, a lot of veterans that are being serviced now. But the fact remains that 25 veterans every day are still committing suicide. Wasn't too long ago that I decided I would like to advocate for veterans, and that is why I am here. The first piece of paper says the city has a heart. And the second, second thing that I have is the City of San Bruno Activity Guide for 2015. Now, I went through the Activity Guide for 2015, and I noticed that there is a veterans' memorial gymnasium and a hall, but those are the only references I see to veterans. You know, my thought is, is that the one big thing that veterans are missing, are missing is, is a place, you know, communication. We always seem to be the last ones to hear anything. And so, so anyway, you know, I have a recommendation for you. And what I recommend is that what we need is, we need to be able to have venues to be able to, to participate with other veterans. So I noticed that you have a gym schedule. I just wonder, maybe once a month, we could have a veterans' night. You have a swimming pool. I just wonder if we could have, once a month, we could, we could have a veterans' night. You know, veterans are kind of funny people, especially coming back from the wars. They don't like to talk about it to other people very much. You know, it's, you know, I'm a veteran of Vietnam, and, and I know for a fact that for the last almost 50 years, that that has exactly been the case for me. And, and not until I started getting involved with the VA Medical Center did I realize how profitable, how good it is for veterans to get together and talk. And so I just hope that, you know, with, with the monies you have, that you might consider opening the gym for one day a month, and, and the swimming pool for one day a month. You know, it may take a while for people to, for the veterans to, to get a grasp of what's going on here. But I guarantee you that once they do, you're not, you're going to have filled gymnasium and a filled swimming pool, because, because we need things like this. So thank you for listening to me, and I hope to be hearing from you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Reports are well taken. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to address the council? All right. We'll get right into item 10, conduct of business. Item 10A, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with TJKM Transportation Consultants, Inc. for the Speed Zone Survey and Traffic Engineering Services Project in an amount not to exceed $34,563.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Joseph Cervantes, and I'm an associate engineer for the Public Services Department, and I'm here to discuss the current item. California law requires that speed limits are updated every five years through an engineering and traffic survey. It is also called a speed zone survey. These surveys are required if the city intends to use electronic methods such as radar to enforce speeds and issue citations for speeding. If speed zone surveys are not updated, speeding citations can be overturned. Speed zone surveys also allow the city to modify speed limits by identifying the appropriate speed limits for each roadway based on prevailing speeds, accident rates, existing land use, and roadway design characteristics. In 2006, the city completed speed zone surveys for 32 locations, and the results of those surveys led to the adjustment of the posted speed limit for 17 corridors. In 2010, the city updated the speed zone surveys. At the time, 12 of the 32 locations received updated speed zone surveys. The remaining 20 locations were extended for two years, since there was no significant changes in design, land use, or traffic volumes. The city now requires all previously surveyed corridors to be updated, and three additional locations will be surveyed. Staff issued a request for proposal, conducted an evaluation of the proposals received, and selected TJKM Transportation Consultants. TJKM specializes in traffic engineering and transportation planning, and have successfully provided traffic engineering services and traffic surveys for several other Bay Area cities. They also successfully completed the most recent speed zone surveys for the city in 2010. The scope of work includes data collection and the preparation of a speed zone survey final report. Data collection, which includes the use of radar guns and tube counters, should have little to no impact to the neighborhoods. The speed zone survey final report will be presented to the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee for review and presented to the City Council for consideration. The City Council would consider the adoption of the speed zone survey and any speed limit changes if necessary. This project is part of the established CIP Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, and will take approximately three to four months to complete. Staff recommends the adoption of the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with TJKM Transportation Consultants in the amount not to exceed $34,563. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Joseph?
Through the chair.
Michael?
I just wanted to clarify something. So my understanding, after, after reading the way the law is written, is that we are required to do this survey wherever we post a speed that's lower than the normally accepted, I think it was referred to as prima facie or basic speed law. So that's, those are the only areas that would be affected by the survey. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So there's only a handful of those. So I'm wondering, after we, we post a, we do our survey, we post a lower speed limit, do we then go back and evaluate how many violations occur within that area after the fact, so that we know whether it was lowering that speed was effective or required, or we just assume that it's going to stay, that it's going to continue to be required?
In terms of evaluating the number of citations, it's extremely difficult to track that. From what I have been told by some officers, sometimes there's a lot of, a high number of citations that are issued, and sometimes, you know, more than 100 per month. And to track how many, it's really difficult to do that. However, you know, every five years, the speed zone surveys are conducted, and they take into consideration the 85 percentile speed, and, and that is the, the measure by which the posted speed limit is identified. And, and there are instances in which, you know, just because an 85 percentile speed is identified, that doesn't necessarily mean the nearest 5 mile per hour increment is used. Engineering analysis is also used to determine what the appropriate posted speed limit is.
Can you expand a little bit on 85 percentile?
So, so the, the intent of the speed zone survey is to capture free-flowing speed. So the survey results are typically not taken when it's peak time. So we want, you know, the intent is to capture how fast cars really want to travel in a particular corridor. And, and so a minimum of 100 speed data points, or cars collected 100 in each direction, and then that is analyzed, and 85% of the measured speeds at or below that, that's the 85 percentile speed. I hope that makes sense.
So 85% of the cars are-
Correct.
-traveling at that speed?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And then to make the determination, I noticed there was two new corridors that we want to evaluate. What criteria were used to select those, those two new corridors?
Okay, yes, to clarify, there were three additional locations that were identified to be included as part of this speed zone survey. That is City Parkway, College Road, and Cunningham Way. And these, this request came from the police department, and, and I believe it's because, perhaps, perhaps the chief can answer.
All right, chief. Why these two?
Perhaps.
Good evening. Can you hear me? No?
You're on.
Am I on now? Okay, good evening. Yeah, the three new site, the three new areas that we've requested for surveys are areas where we've received numerous complaints, not only based on speed, but based on the conditions. You'll notice one of them is City Parkway, which is an area frequented, frequented by children and a lot of pedestrians. That combined with complaints of speed in those areas have resulted in us requesting the survey, so we can adequately enforce speeding violators in those areas. Otherwise, it's, it's almost impossible for us to, to issue a citation and have it stand up in, in any type of court.
But that goes back to my first question, where if there, there is a basic speed law in that area, and we're merely enforcing it, it doesn't require the survey. It's only when we're doing something that's more restrictive. That, that was my understanding.
Yeah, I can address that. The, for, the law requires that if we're going to use radar, or what we use now is called LiDAR, it's basically the same thing, just different technology. We, from a law enforcement perspective, in order to enforce that citation in court, or to, to be able to stand up in front of a traffic commissioner and support that citation, we need a speed survey to adequately articulate what the safe speed of the roadway is in order to justify that. For example, if somebody should challenge a citation in court, and there's no survey on file, they're not necessarily challenging the, the actions of the officer, or even the reliability of the, of the radar gun. Their challenge is, is that the, the posted speed limit is not appropriate, and that the speed survey for us allows us to stand in front of a traffic commissioner and say that the survey has been completed, this is a space, a safe speed for the conditions of that roadway, and that's why we're operating LiDAR or radar. It's, it's the only enforcement avenue that we have, because in, in these surface streets and corridors, there's no feasible way for officers to pace vehicles, or in any other way, adequately and effectively detail their speed, or articulate how fast they're going.
Okay. But say in a residential neighborhood, the speed limit is what?
25.
25. 25. So if, if somebody was doing 30, and they got a citation, and we hadn't done the survey, are you saying that that wouldn't be valid, or is it only when we've gone below that 25, and say that for this particular neighborhood, for whatever special conditions, we want it to be 15?
Yeah, the validity of the citation, the citation would still be valid, should that citation be challenged, and if that citation was based solely on radar or LiDAR, if it was challenged, the traffic commissioner would more than likely void that citation because there was no, no survey on file.
Wow. Okay. Thank you.
I hope nobody's, I hope not too many people are watching, because we'll have a lot more traffic court subpoenas, but that's-
Through the chair. Chief, what concerns me is I take City Parkway many times throughout-
Chief, what concerns me is I, I, I take City Parkway many times throughout, throughout the day, and it's posted at fifteen miles an hour. And, believe me, I, I drive fifteen miles an hour, and they're right on me. I mean, no, but, very few, and, and I'm sure, from what the explanation is, is that it's gonna, we're gonna be hard pressed to get eighty-five percentile, you know, at fifteen miles an hour. So, if you're saying that, uh, a survey, the speed limit might, might be increased on Si- City Parkway?
Well, I'll leave that to the engineers. I will tell you that from an enforcement perspective, uh, there will, there is no other mechanism, especially on a, on a street like City Parkway, for us to, uh, enforce, uh, a speed limit of any, of any sort, uh, simply because the length of the street itself and given the conditions, um, you know, our, our speedometers and our patrol cars are calibrated annually just to make sure that when we do go to court, we can say that we adequately paced a car, and the only, you know, if we're on the freeway or maybe El Camino, we can, we can do that-
It has to be radar.
-occasionally, but in a scenario like that, uh, the, the radar is the only, um, effective measure, with the exception of an exhibition of speed, where s- those are, those are extreme conditions, but if somebody's, if somebody's traveling quickly through there, in order for us to articulate that or to prove that they're speeding, um, this is our, this is our main mechanism for doing that.
Thank you.
Chief, isn't it understood that if, if, uh, in a residential area, the speed limit's twenty-five unless otherwise posted?
Yes, the universal or prima facie speed in any residential area is twenty-five unless posted.
Thank you.
If I could, uh, just ask the chief to also respond to the very first question about whether we have the ability to identify, um, how many citations we're issuing and what areas. Um, I, I understood that to be your very first question.
Yes, thanks to the, the council and the investment you've made over the past few years in records management systems at the Police Department, uh, we can do that for traffic studies, and, and we're happy to provide the, that statistical data. We do now enter all of our citations and can track, uh, pretty much when and where they were, they were issued. So, that is available, and I think when, uh, you know, during the course of traffic studies, we're often asked to provide that data, and we do.
That would be great. I think that'd be a great data point to include in these sort of, uh, studies. So, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions of staff or action by the council?
Through the chair.
Irene?
I have a question. Chief, you might, this might be your question. If the survey shows that a street is, that the posted street, uh, I'm sorry, that the posted speed limit is okay, but people run stop lines or they, they do other things that is dangerous for that, do you guys coordinate and figure out better ways to calm traffic or to maybe change your officer schedules so that they're there to give tickets or, I mean, is there a coordination between the different studies and?
Yeah, yes, it's, it, this is just one of many, um, traffic efforts that, that we have in place, and we work collaboratively to address those, um, traffic issues. In fact, we've met regularly regarding a number of issues. Our traffic, uh, division, um, strategically, um, deploys personnel, or we have areas in the city that we consider hotspots, and that's based on complaints, it's based on collisions, it's based on the number of citations that are written in specific areas. So, we, we compile that data, and again, another, um, technology-driven program that, that the city's invested in over the, the past couple of years, um, has an algorithm that kind of tells us when and where we should be looking for, for violators based on, based on that information. The primary dat, the primary, um, sources of data for that are complaints, collisions, and the s- number of citations that are issued at any specific area. So, that's how we drive that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Through the chair, I'll adopt the resolution.
Councilmember Ibera?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Rueng?
Aye. Item ten B, receive a report and recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Commission regarding amendment of the city's master fee schedule to move the San Bruno Park School District into the Group Three Community and Service Organizations Fee category.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. This report is being presented tonight to follow up on a request made by the City Council during its budget deliberations on June twenty-third. During these deliberations, the City Council requested that the Parks and Recreation Commission advise the City Council on whether all city nonprofits and community and service organizations should be placed into one group within the master fee schedule rather than in the two groups which currently exist. Additionally, the City Council asked the Commission for its input on what adjustments, if any, should be made to the fees currently charged to the city's community and service organizations. By way of background, Chapter Nine of the city's master fee schedule establishes fees and charges for parks and recreation programs and facility and field rentals. These fees are classified into five groups as shown on the screen behind me. Group one is city-sponsored programs and activities. Group two, San Bruno Park School District Programs and Activities. Group three, service and community organizations. Group four, San Bruno residents or businesses possessing a current City of San Bruno business license. And group five, non-resident individuals, businesses, or organizations that are conducting not-for-profit activities. Unique to the San Bruno Park School District, Group Two is not charged a field or facility rental fee. Only out-of-pocket costs incurred in association with staff services, such as lifeguards, for example, are charged. Currently, the school district uses the city's swimming pool, picnic areas, and fields for its annual end-of-year school parties and its annual Day of the Child, Day of the Book event. Based on the current fee structure, the school district pays twenty dollars per hour per lifeguard for use of the swimming pool. Based on its historic use, were the Group Two fee category eliminated and the school district moved into the Group Three fee structure, the additional annual cost for these uses would be approximately one thousand forty-five dollars per year. Of this total, one thousand forty-five dollars, approximately nine hundred and seventy-five dollars of the cost would be associated with the end of school year parties, and one hundred and seventy dollars for use of the district's, excuse me, for the district's use of Rotary Pavilion and the field adjacent to the Rotary Pavilion for the Day of the Child, Day of the Book program. Per the City Council's request, the Park and Recreation Commission, at its special meeting on August twelfth, reviewed the master fee schedule. The Commission deferred review of the service and community organization fees, the Category Three fees, until it conducts its annual review of park and recreation fees, which it does each year, uh, early in the calendar year, to provide the City Council with input in advance of the annual operating budget review and adoption process. However, the Commission did discuss the concept of eliminating the Group Two Fee Group. While the Commission recognized and acknowledged during its discussions the school district's current financial condition, the Commission agreed that it was reasonable for all city nonprofit and service and community organizations to pay the same fee. The Commission voted unanimously to recommend to the City Council the elimination of Group Two from the master fee schedule and to move that fee user group into Group Three. Commissioner Lori Greenberg is with us this evening in the event the council has any questions. She's representing the Park and Recreation Commission. Staff anticipates returning to the City Council in January two thousand sixteen, uh, in just a few months, with proposed adjustments to various fees throughout the master fee schedule. In the event the City Council wishes to modify the group structure showed on the screen behind me, staff would present these changes at that time. Staff is seeking the City Council's direction on how it should proceed with the next update, specifically of the parks and recreation fees, and specifically as it relates to the five fee groups. This concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Ken?
Through the chair, thank you, Carrie, and I want to thank, thank the Park and Rec Commission for diligence on this. I was the one that brought this up during the, uh, in the budget sessions, and it's for a long time, I've always, because I'm, you know, with a community group and checking fees and how much my cost and budgeting for certain events, it always caught my eye that there was a separate group for San Bruno Park School District. Now, nothing against San Bruno Park School District, but it's just, it could have been some other group, and it's like, why do they get their own classification? But I must admit that after we went through the joint use agreement in San Bruno Park School District, uh, prior to their financial woes became very public, I made it very clear that I didn't think it was fair that the San Bruno Park School District had these types of concessions considering changing fees for the city. Since then, and I must admit that, uh, you know, and again, I would like to hear from the representative of the Park and Rec Commission as far as what sort of dialogue happened, uh, went on with that, but I also have heard from, uh, residents that are affiliated with San Bruno Park School District, and they have their own opinion, and I respect that as far as how they feel that San Bruno Park should have, uh, their own classification. So, it's not, my intent was not to say, no, San Bruno Park shouldn't get this, but more why and why not certain groups and that are classified under Group Three. So, further, and I, I'd be happy for the Park and Rec Commission to, you know, take their time and go through, you know, both classifications and even more so, you know, on, on, on the other groups, because it occurred to me that even though Group Three is supposed to be for community organizations and things, the real benefit is really only at the rec center and the senior center. When you go to park settings and other, you know, fees, they're basically all the same with Group Four, which is basically a resident or any San Bruno business. So, I think it's, there's, you know, there's some adjustment that should be made, you know, all over the place on that, and, and I appreciate that the Commission would look at that, you know, thoroughly. So, that's just my point.
Anyone else?
Through the chair. Quick, did we notify or let the, uh, school district or superintendent know that we were in or the Commission was reviewing that or it would be coming up this evening?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. I'd like to see us reaching out to the school district more, and the superintendent who was just sitting here. Uh, I know that as she's embarked upon her new journey, I think we need to be, uh, collaborating and, uh, need to keep people informed each other as she's doing for us. Second thing is, in, in light of Ken's comments, and I know I, I believe the Commission, uh, felt the need to come back with something to the council, uh, at this meeting as you had indicated at the Commission meeting, um, and I think if we're gonna look at it, let's look at it broadly and globally. I can go back in history where we started off with five, we actually had a two A and a two B for the senior center at one point. So, um, I can tell you, 'cause I rented it here when I was on city staff, and that was specifically for the school district so that they could have Fridays at a, at a reduced cost rather than Saturdays, 'cause Fri- Fridays were less popular, and some of the school, uh, district, uh, parents were saying, hey, can we get a little break here, because by the time we do a fundraiser and we do the setup costs, et cetera, et cetera. So, what I think would be advantageous is if we really look at the dynamics of the rental, the groups, where we've been, where we are, and where maybe they should go. Maybe they need to appoint a subcommittee, but I think my impression was, and Commissioner Greenberg can speak for herself and the Commission, is that they really felt the need to come back at least with one, one item that was asked, and then the second item, which was Group Three, really was put off at this point so they could get more detailed information and really give it its proper review.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, the council member is, is exactly correct. The Park and Recreation Commission each year, as it does look at the master fee schedule, does precisely what he was referring to, which is to set up a subcommittee so that they can really scrutinize all of the fees beyond the, just the time allowed in a Commission meeting. And to the, to the point that Councilmember Medina was making about providing the district with appropriate sort of foreknowledge or information, the thought was to make sure that precisely that happened by putting it on your agenda this evening as a non-action item, per se, so that if the council did deliberate and have some discussion this evening, any adjustments wouldn't occur until several months from now to give the school district an opportunity to provide their input as well.
Anyone else? Lori? Did you have anything, did you have anything to add?
So, at, at our Commission meeting, we discussed this. Initially, we thought, why burden our school district with an additional fee, but then we also, uh, reviewed that the school district charges our city or our recreation department to use their facilities for an after-school program, and that was, I don't know if you wanna publicly give the amount, but it was like thirty, um, thirty times more than what we would ac- accept from them. So, we figured it was a fair, fair exchange to charge, um, the school district and put them in a category with our nonprofit, uh, groups. That's why we came to that, uh, decision. Or recommendation, rather.
Thank you. Okay, so, you submitted your report, but you're not asking for any action tonight, so, are you?
So, based on the council's feedback, it sounds like the council would appreciate a, additional, more detailed review, um, as part of the Commission's, uh, annual process that we would anticipate occurring at the first of the year related specifically to the fees and some additional evaluation of the fee categories. Is, is that understanding correct?
Yeah, that's good. Does someone have a comment?
Hi, Wendy Al McDad. I just heard about this, I think, in the last week or so, and school hasn't started, so I think a lot of people haven't heard about this. School's gonna be starting in a day and a half. I just had a bad taste in my mouth when I heard about it, to be honest. With everything we went through, it was such a difficult last year. It really, and I thought that we were gonna be working, you know, with the city a lot more. It just, it just put a real, you know, it just didn't seem right to me, even to charge, to propose to charge the school district even a dollar more. I know it's a thousand dollars on, you know, annually, but the other part is that it's PTAs, it's not just really the district that would be coming, having to come up with that money, it's the individual PTAs who are having to do fundraising, um, that would have to come up for, to, to, you know, to, for additional funds to use the park. So, this, this, this was my, um, concern about it, and I really believe that the school district is some, should be treated differently than other community organizations by the city. It's a benefit for all of the city, um, to have a strong, you know, public education system. It's just, uh, you know, and we're, many of us parents are, are really working hard, and a lot of people are working hard, you know, to improve the schools, and now we have a new superintendent and, you know, but I, I think this could be really spun in a really bad way, too. So, I hope you consider not doing, changing it and, and still, um, allowed to have this, the, the special category for the school district. Thanks.
Thank you. Your points are very well taken, and we're gonna look at this in a lot more detail.
Marty Medina, Garden Avenue. I, I, I need to echo that. I heard it about the same time that Wendy did, and it, it's the end of the school party, right? It's one time for each school. It's a thousand forty-five dollars. The amount of effort we're to, taking up dealing with that is to get all the staff time, to get the resolution printed, to get the city attorney to like, look at it. All those costs compared to what we're really doing to try to, we get back to this, get back at the school because something happened a little while ago, it's time to turn the page. We have a new superintendent, okay? It's a thousand and forty-five dollars. It's the end-of-the-year party. It's one time. If they were having twenty, thirty parties and abusing the system and getting this big free charge, I can understand maybe tweaking it a little bit, but it's a one-time event, guys. Come on. We're better than that.
Let me, let me just say something. You made a, you made a, you made a comment there about getting back at, because of things that happened in the past. I frankly find that disgusting when this council approved no charges for the schools this year up to thirty thousand dollars.
That's correct. That's what's so surprising about it.
All right, so, we, a council member asked- All right, so we, a council member asked at, during a session of rate hearings, that they wanted more clarification. They got the clarification, we're going to study it more. Nothing's been decided, but to suggest that this City Council is getting back at an entity, especially the school district, is way out of line. Thank you. Thank you.
I should be able to finish, Mayor.
You just finished and you walked away. Thank you very much for your comment.
No, you were.
Thank you.
There was something with the negotiations, that something happened. So I truly appreciate everything you've done, Mayor.
Thank you.
And what all the Councils done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair, and very, very quick, Wendy and Marty, that's why the school district will be kept updated. There is, Carol, correct me, there is no resolution, because this is only informational, so no time on the attorney has been spent. And as the mayor indicated, I think, I believe the Council, and I'll speak for myself, and my colleagues disagree with me, they can tell me, but I think that we have welcomed the new superintendent. As you know, the vice mayor and I went out and had coffee, she sent us newsletters, I called her on her first day that she started the school district. Michael and I serve on the school district subcommittee, so I think we have, and as the mayor indicated, we let the fees go, which I believe is around $32,000, in a continuation, and I've seen you at the events and others as we're raising money for the foundation, and I've met with them, trying to see what we can do as a team, as a collective, as a community. So yes, I appreciate the passion that everybody has, but in essence, I want us to bottle that up and put it toward the good and to make the difference in a positive way.
Have your direction?
I just, I just want to say one, I didn't know it was $1,000. All I see is a bunch of zeros. I see two columns of zeros. And yes, it gives an impression that there could be a lot of events that this one classification could take advantage of. So if it's $1,000, then maybe we, we've done special, you know, special fees for certain projects and, you know, certain events. We can do that. My question to you is, and there was a comment about public schools, does Cappuccino High School, where do they fall into this? Because it says San Bruno Park School District, so I'm assuming that Cappuccino High School, if they wanted to have a picnic, or if they wanted to rent a facility, they would fall under Group Three. And so, those are the sort of things, and also while we're at it, it's, I like to better understand the concession stand rental. You know, why is it $200 and why is it $300? For that kind of, for that kind of expense, no wonder some of our small, you know, organizations don't use it, you know, to their advantage, because, you know, there's a lot of money that comes off the top, so. I think, with all due respect to all of our organizations in this community, the Park and Rec Commission has got their task right now, and I trust that they will do the right thing and come back probably after the first of the year with a recommendation, so. Thank you.
Thank you. You have your direction. Okay, great. Item 10C, adopt a resolution extending library hours of operation from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m., the existing now from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Fridays.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers.
Thank you.
My name is Tim Wallace, I'm the Library Services Division Manager. The resolution before you this evening proposes to open the library an additional three hours on Fridays. Prior to 2010, the library was open 59 hours a week, including Fridays 10 to 6. In 2010, due to a significant decline in general fund revenues, the library's budget for part-time employees was significantly reduced. This budget reduction resulted in the library reducing its open hours by 12 per week, bringing the total open hours down to 47 a week, which is still the amount that the library is open. As part of this reduction, Friday hours were cut to 1:00 to 5:00. This evening's resolution would restore a portion of the hours that were eliminated in 2010. The proposed new Friday hours are 10 to 5:00. Opening at 1:00 on Fridays has been problematic since the reduced hours were implemented. 1:00 is significantly later opening time than any other day of the week. This causes confusion amongst our patrons. Even today, five years after its implementation, staff observes a steady stream of people walking up to the library's doors on Fridays between 10:00 and 1:00, expecting the doors to open. One of the most regular complaints that staff receives is the fact that we open so late on Fridays. There are several Fridays during the school year that Parkside Middle School has an early release time. Students begin arriving outside the library at about 12:30 on those Fridays. They, along with the rest of the public, must wait until 1:00 when the library opens to enter. By opening early, those students would be allowed to enter as soon as they arrive. By opening on Fridays at 10:00, the library would have just two sets of open hours for the public to remember. Monday through Thursday, 11:00 to 8:00. Fridays and Saturdays, 10:00 to 5:00. If approved, staff would advertise this change of hours through our monthly newsletter, department Facebook page, cable television Channel One, the city's website, media outlets such as Patch and San Mateo County Times, and internal signage and flyers. There's sufficient funding in the current operating budget to open these additional three hours. This concludes my report regarding Friday hours. However, I'd like to take a moment to highlight a couple of our current programs. The library is wrapping up a very.
Can we do that?
I was told that was allowed.
Tim, we don't see you a lot, so please, feel welcome. Take all the time you need.
Okay.
Hey, Tim, why don't you highlight some special programs?
Okay. So the library is wrapping up a very successful summer reading program. We had 1,941 children sign up for summer reading, which significantly tops our old record that we set last year, which was 1,361. We also collaborated with the Recreation Division this summer to provide their youngest campers with weekly storytimes and their older campers with science programs, including water conservation and a science fair. Currently, we're seeking volunteers for our homework center, which will reopen for the new school year on September 8. We will have a volunteer training this Friday, August 28, at 4:00. Anyone interested in volunteering should contact the library for more information. I'd be happy to take any questions you have at this time. Middle, middle school math.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to indicate that one of the programs that Tim Wallace didn't tell you about was the program in which kids who have difficulty reading read to dogs that are supplied by the Peninsula Humane Society.
Wow.
And that was a program that Tim worked very hard to get to the library, and I understand, has been very successful.
Great.
Tim, I was unaware of that, and may I say, there's a lady at work, she's the mother, and she has her dog, Delta, and when she explained that to me, I thought that was the neatest thing, and there's a little pack that they put on and all this, and so that's great. So thank you for thinking of something new and outside the box, and I appreciate that, and thank you for your impromptu highlights of the library. So you, I think you already answered my question, which was, the money is already in the 15, 16 budget for it.
Yes, that's correct.
And about how much is it for the three hours?
About $10,500.
And the money's already there, so why do we need a resolution? Why don't we just change the hours?
The primary reason for the resolution is to document the change.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Irene.
Thank you. I too was not aware of the dog part, but did you put that on a link in the library? Is it, you have pictures? It's a fabulous program.
Yeah, we have taken pictures. I'm not sure if it's on the website, I'll look into that.
Okay, yeah, you guys need to beef that stuff up a little.
Yeah.
But I have a fundamental question. Is there any reason not to have just 11:00 opening and move the later opening till 6:00? Instead of opening 11:00 and then 10:00 on Saturday, Friday and Saturday, is there a reason not to open 11:00 every single day and then stay open one hour later on Fridays and Saturdays?
We could do that. Our thinking was that to keep the hours consistent and simple, just to have those two sets of hours.
But this would give you one set of hour.
Mm-hmm.
So this would give you 11:00 every single day, plus one more hour on Friday, and I know people don't get back from work until 5:00 or a little bit after, who would appreciate coming in on Friday night, getting a movie or a DVD or a book for their weekend.
Our past experience was that the number of patrons that come in on Fridays after 5:00 really tailed off, so I guess people are busy on Friday nights and don't visit the library as much, and that, so that was our experience.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Would anyone like to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution, I'm excited, we have more hours. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Rueng.
Aye. We already had item 11. Item 12, comments from councilmembers?
Through the chair.
Ken?
I just, I did, I did contact Public Services and the Council, but I am, I understand that there's been a parking survey in the north area of the city, San Mateo Avenue, Huntington, and the Fifth Edition, and I think it's really important that we really can't, you know, let everyone know in that area that there is a study going on, and I know that the study has just come out, and I'm anxious to see what, what sort of reaction that the Traffic Safety Parking Committee comes up with, and also what sort of suggestions or comments have come from the public on that. So I look forward to the next couple of months as far as what comes out of that. Thank you.
Great. Anything else?
Through the chair.
Michael?
I'm going to take this opportunity to thank the volunteers that set up our stage and the audience, the seating area and everything, but I noticed that we get water up here every time we have a meeting, and not very many of us avail ourselves of the water, just occasionally some of us do, but being that we're in a drought situation and we are being asked to conserve, I'm wondering if we could suggest that we maybe not put out a pitcher for everyone and maybe just a couple up here and one or two down there for the staff and maybe save a few drops of water that way.
Okay. Anything else? Closed session, it's no closed session this evening. This meeting is adjourned until our next meeting right here, September 8, 2015.